All three candidates are with us. Our host tonight is Randy Speck, who is Chair of ANC 34G. We have two moderators, myself, I'm Samantha Nolan, and I'm past President of the Chevy Chase Citizens Association. And our other moderator is?
I am Candace Nelson, President of the Ward Four Democrats of Washington DC.
Um, we've had a little change in what we reported. We received an overload of questions, so we've changed from having... Oh, sorry, I was just getting given a message. Everybody attending, other than the panelists and the two moderators, have been muted and will stay muted. There's no chat or Q and A during the forum. All of the questions were submitted previously, and we've selected among them. There is an agreement for the rules of the day, and Candace, do you want to handle that?
Sure. Due to the number of questions that were received yesterday, we would like to ask the candidates who received the rules of the day before that stated that they would have two-minute responses, if they're okay with having one-minute responses to the questions. We will still have a two-minute opening and closing, but one-minute responses to the questions, just to give us an opportunity to get more of the questions that we received from the public. So if the candidates are okay with that, we'd like for you to just raise your hand, and we could see you right now if you will agree to that change. Okay, all three candidates are in agreement.
Terrific. So I'd like to introduce our candidates tonight. We will introduce everyone alphabetically and by their last name, and give them two minutes to introduce themselves and tell you about them. We're going to start with Marlena Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marlena D. Edwards, and I am a passionate community activist, and I'm committed to social justice. I'm a native Washingtonian and lifelong Ward Four resident. I've participated in many Ward Four community organizations. I've been on the Executive Committee for the Ward Four Democrats with the Shepherd Park Civic Association, Emory Beacon of Light, which is in Ward Four, and many organizations across the city, such as the DC Democratic State Committee. I was the Ward Four Committee Representative, and I thank you all because I was voted on at the highest vote in the history of the position, 7,143 votes. So I thank you all. I thank the Chevy Chase Citizens Organization, ANC 34G, the Ward Four Democrats, and the community for tuning in.
Okay, well, next move to Janice Louis George.
Good evening. Thank you to our host. My name is Janice Louis George. I'm a third-generation Washingtonian, a proud graduate of all DC public schools, Rudolph Deal School at That Walls. All my teachers told me they would be on tonight, so I couldn't leave one school out. I'm a longtime Democrat, having served on the school board, served on the Ward Four Democrats, as an Executive Committee Woman on the Democratic State Committee, and most recently, as an Assistant Attorney General under the leadership of Col Ray C. You know, Ward Four has always been my home. I grew up on Second Kennedy Street with my mom, who is a was and still is a US postal worker, serving right here in Ward Four at the Brightwood Post Office. And my husband Kyle and I live on Ethan Rittenhouse now in Manor Park. You know, growing up, my mother always instilled in me and my siblings the value of remembering always to lift as we climb. And our city has continued to lift, but we have failed, have continued to climb, but we have failed to lift. We have moved forward while leaving too many residents behind. When I returned home to attend law school at Howard University, I saw the stories of families had changed. Over the last six years, it has become harder for families to afford to live here, for our seniors to age in place, and for their children to return home, have childcare, send their children to neighborhood schools, to rely on public transportation and city services, and receive access to healthcare. And while this was happening, I watched our leadership: vote against paid family leave, take away TOPA rights, repeal the will of the voters for a living wage, and become mired in campaign finance violation scandals, one after the other. I know the challenges Ward Four faces, face, because I know them, not because I've read about them, but because I've lived them. As a former Assistant Attorney General, I know what accountability looks like, and I'm going to bring back to the Wilson Building for Ward Four, a real advocate for Ward Four residents. Now, more than ever, we need accountable, ethical, and responsive leadership. And I will be that leader as Ward Four Councilmember. I look forward to our conversation tonight.
Randy, turn it off. Sorry. And now we'll hear from Councilmember Brandon Todd.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Nolan, and thank you to the Chevy Chase Citizens Association, ANC 34G, and the Ward Four Democrats for pulling this candidate's discussion together tonight, so that Ward Four residents would have an opportunity to hear from us. My name is Brandon Todd, and I am the Ward Four Councilmember. I am a native Washingtonian, growing up in Petworth. I live six blocks from my mother currently, Karen Todd. I'm a proud Ward Four Democrat, a past President of the organization, and I was elected to the council in 2015 in a special election, and then I was re-elected in 2016 to represent Ward Four on the Council of the District of Columbia for a full four-year term. I am running for reelection to continue the progress that we started five years ago, to continue investing hundreds of millions of dollars in Ward Four public schools, to continue to make critical investments so that seniors can age in place, no matter which of our 20 neighborhoods they live in, to continue the economic opportunity that we have created together along Georgia Avenue, Kennedy Street, Eastern Avenue, Riggs Road and South Dakota Avenue, and really the belle of the ball for the entire city at Walter Reed. I'm running for reelection to continue good constituent services and government accountability, to ensure that agencies across our government are responding and responding quickly to the needs of our very diverse 20 neighborhoods. At the council, I chair the Committee on Government Operations. I sit on the committees on Health, Human Services, Transportation, and the Environment, and Youth and Recreational Services. I represent our ward on a number of regional bodies, serving as Chairman of the Large Cities Council with the National League of City, the Chairman at the Metropolitan Washington Council Air Quality Committee. I sit on the Transportation Board at the Council of Governments, focused on regional transportation planning and use. I think my...
Yes.
Thank you. Candace?
Okay. And now it's time for us to start with the questions from the public. This first question is for all the candidates. It's been announced there is a $600 million to $788 million deficit projected in the city's budget this year due to the loss of revenue from businesses being shut down. Considering the shortfall, what areas would you protect and what areas would you cut from the budget?
And you're going to start with...
I'm sorry, Samantha?
You're starting with Janice.
And I'm going to start with Janice Louis George.
I think, thank you. With this current COVID crisis happening, what we have seen is that our current systems are falling. Our families, our working families are finding it harder to make it through this crisis right now. And so for me, when we talk about a budget, a budget has to reflect our priorities as a city. And our priorities as a city should be focused on helping our working families. And so I'm going to protect our housing, our affordable housing, protect our education and childcare funds. Right now, we're seeing families struggle with childcare, and some of our childcare centers facing closing. So funding birth-to-three-for-all remains. And making sure education for our students as they transition is going to be equitably done, and so that our students don't lose out as they have to transition, and our teachers and educators have the resources they need to survive. When it comes to what we're cutting in the budget, I think we've seen events DC budget has been exorbitant, and we can use those funds to help those most in need in our community.
Okay, same question, this time to Councilmember Todd.
Okay, thank you very much for that question, and it's a good question. And we are having discussions right now about a $722 million revenue loss for the fiscal year that we're currently in. The mayor will send the council a supplemental budget in the coming weeks, and I will be very focused to make sure that Ward Four school modernizations are intact, Ward Four investments in our public facilities, like the $24 million we were able to get to support the Chevy Chase Recreation Center, are intact. We know that next year, fiscal year 2021, experience around a 700-plus-million-dollar revenue shortfall, and we are having those conversations now. Supplemental from the mayor to talk about the changes that we need to make for 2020. And then on May 12th, the mayor will send her 2021 budget down, but I'll be laser-focused on making sure that affordable housing, schools, seniors, and the things that matter most to our 20 neighborhoods, see cuts in those areas.
And now, Ms. Marlena Edwards.
Thank you so much. In response to your question, I have over 23 years of experience in district government, and I have been able to touch almost every single agency across the government. I've worked extensively with executive leaders in the District of Columbia on the national level. I've worked on the transition team for Mayor Bowser, Mayor Gray, and Attorney General Col Ray C. So because of the vast experience that I've had with touching so many agencies in the District of Columbia, my platform deals with health, which is critical. We need to make sure that education is in place, and that's not just for our youth. It was very sad that we lost $14 million for early childhood education and economic development.
Time is up.
It moved too slow, so...
Time is up.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. For the next question, each of the candidates has chosen a different method for financing your campaign. Please explain why you chose the financing method, and discuss the negative aspects, if any, of the financing methods used by the other two candidates. And this time, we will start with Councilmember Todd.
Thank you for that question. I chose the traditional route of campaign finance for a couple of reasons. The first being, I have now participated in the formation and approval of six budgets. And quite frankly, I think that public dollars should be reinvested into the community. So when I've had to cobble together $500,000 in order for seniors to get free dental care from a piece of legislation that I introduced, shepherd, and got fully funded through the council, I just feel very strongly that public dollars should not be used to buy yard signs and pizza and T-shirts and campaign swag, particularly when we are looking at a nearly $1 billion budget shortfall at over $750,000, $50 million for this fiscal year and the same next year. We should use precious public dollars for the public good, and I believe that investing in schools, senior structure, is how we should use public dollars.
Thank you. Marlena Edwards, you're next.
Yes, thank you so much. I am a self-funded candidate, and I chose the route of traditional funding because I do not believe in machine politics. I do not believe in, I do not believe in machine politics, and that it's important to make sure that you're able to give a voice to everyone and that you are independent. The reason that I decided to jump in this race is because it's critical that we have accountability in government, accountability across contracts, and to make sure that we have good government in the District of Columbia. So that's why I'm in this race.
Thank you. And Janice Louis George?
Yes, that's a great question. I am proud to be Ward Four's first-ever fair elections candidate, which means I don't take any developer money and corporate money, any PAC money, and my campaign is fully funded by individuals here in our ward and in this city. And the reason why I chose to be a fair elections candidate, because I believe our government is better for it, that I will be, my vote will not be bought before I get on the council. My vote won't be bought, and I won't be bossed by anyone else who has donated to my campaign or donated to a constituent services fund. This campaign hasn't been bought, and we save money as a city when we have candidates and elected officials who are not beholden to developers and corporations, but beholden to the residents of this ward and the residents of this city and no one else. And I know in for fact that, you know, Councilmember Brandon Todd and the rest of the council unanimously voted to pass fair elections, and so it's a shame not to see them take advantage of that. Shirley once said, "If they don't give you a chair, you bring, give you a seat, and you bring a folding chair." And fair elections gives every candidate opportunity to bring that folding chair and represent our ward and our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Marlena Edwards, and the question is, what do you see are the two most important duties of the Ward Four Councilmember?
The two most important duties is safety, that's public safety, and that is across all neighborhoods in Ward Four. And part of what ties in with public safety is making sure that people have housing and affordable housing opportunities. The second most important priority deals with education and making sure that our schools are adequately funded, that they are performing, such as Roosevelt, that needs to improve in performance, making sure that we have expansions for Lafayette students, making sure of that proper services in there for school and adult education.
Thank you. Janice Louis George?
Yeah, I would say the two most important roles. One, obviously, is constituent services, serving our residents, making sure that our seniors are good people, that government services are working for us, that when we say there is a street that needs to be paved, that's an unsafe intersection for our young people, that it's getting done, and it gets done in a timely way to make sure that we are all protected. And I think the second thing, which is also important, is the policy and advocacy piece. We are legislators, and we have to produce legislation that is going to impact our working families and make sure it's easier for them to stay here and be able to survive here and be able to thrive here. And so for me, being a legislator is important, and constituent services as well. And I say, the advocacy piece has to be there, and the legislative piece has to be there, because just showing up and taking pictures at parties isn't going to do anything for the mom who has to choose whether she can pay for rent this month or child this year. That takes policy advocacy and not just showing up at events.
Thank you. And Councilmember Todd?
Thank you very much. The two most important things for the Ward Four Councilmember first is to represent and protect the residents of Ward Four. Represent them in a way that they will want to be represented, by bringing home the bacon, right? Making sure that we're making the key investments when and where we need to. To listen to residents of Ward Four. I've spent the last five years listening to residents across all 20 neighborhoods and figuring out what the needs are, where the gaps are in the laws of the district, where the budget investments need to be made. And that's exactly why we've created over 2,000 units of housing in our ward in the last five years, either preserved or in the pipeline or created. That's why we've invested over $300 million in Ward Four schools and have another $300 million of investment between now and 2026. That's why we're helping more seniors age in place with programs that will keep money in their pockets.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next question is also for all candidates. Many councilmembers have decided not to have a constituent services fund after years of having them misused. If elected, will you have a constituent services fund? And if so, how would you use the funds? And I think we begin with Janice Louis George.
Yeah. What we've seen is that constituent services funds have been used historically to actually, you know, be a funnel for contractors, developers, and people to be able to donate to campaigns. We've seen a number of times where someone who got in a contract had given $500 to a constituent services fund. And so honestly, I think, you know, I'm in support of abolishing and not having constituent services funds. We need honest government. We deserve honest government. And, you know, Councilmember Todd just noted that we need to listen to our constituents, and this is about who we're listening to. And when you have constituent services funds, it mirrors the way people, who our councilmembers choose to listen to. And so I don't want to have that. One of the reasons I'm also a fair elections candidate, because I want to be listening to the residents of Ward Four, our amazing ANC commissioners, our amazing presidents of our civic associations who do great work, and that's who I want to be beholden to. And constituent services have become a funnel of misuse of money to influence our councilmembers, and enough is enough for our residents.
Thank you. And we'll go to Councilmember Todd next.
Thank you very much. I have maintained a constituent services fund the entire time that I'm on the council, and I do support having them, and I would not support abolishing them. When I use my constituent services fund, we use it to build community across Ward Four. We use it to host an annual family day that brings all 20 neighborhoods together, so that folks in our ward can talk to each other and be neighborly. We use it to donate over 800 new coats for Ward Four students who are in need across all our schools, public schools and public charter schools. We use our constituent services fund to help neighbors when they need to pay their electric bill, their gas bill, when they need rental assistance. We've bought books for kids to go to college. We've provided burial assistance. We use our constituent services fund to build community. We sponsor moon bounces for PTAs and PTOs. We sponsor moon bounces and face painting for neighborhood block parties. So I think I fully support constituent services fund, and I would not support abolishing it.
And Marlena Edwards?
I'm a firm believer in having a constituent services fund, as long as it's administered with character and integrity, because there are multiple emergency needs that our residents have. There are several recreation centers that may sponsor free programs or after-school sports programs, such as football or so, but you have parents that can't afford to pay for the uniform for their children. So a constituent service fund can help with that, can help with utilities, can help with community programs, supplemental programs at rec centers to help with education remediation. So there's multiple good uses that can be used for the program.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Our next question is about affordable housing, and the question is for all three candidates. How would you increase affordable housing in Ward Four for our first responders and teachers? Where do you see that housing located? And we will have Councilmember Brandon Todd answer first.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson. Over the last five years, we have, as I said earlier, created or preserved or have in the pipeline over 2,000 units of affordable housing. I believe the largest gap that we need to fill is those folks who are squarely in the middle class, those teachers, firefighters, and first responders. Last year at the council, we had an opportunity to fund a $20 million middle-income housing dollars. We turned it into a tax abatement. We have to fund that fund so that builders can build affordable housing for... We have put online units at Walter Reed, 80 units for seniors, 77 units for formerly homeless veterans. We have put online 60 units right in Brightwood for families right there in the middle class, but we know that we have to do more. We have to build 36,000 units in 2025 with 14,000 of those affordable housing units, and a number of those for folks who are squarely in the middle class, but we have to do much more. I'm committed to it.
Thank you. And next, Marlena Edwards?
I have been on the Board of Directors of Emory Beacon of Light, which is right here in Ward Four, and they built an affordable housing complex, which has 90 units, and you must earn under $60,000 a year to qualify, not over $60,000, under $60,000 a year to qualify. We need to make sure that we not only assist first responders with homeownership, but workforce housing. And for the middle class, who's right here in the District of Columbia, works in the District of Columbia to make work convenient for them, and they add to our tax base. Housing, a big opportunity, would be to put it at Walter Reed Hospital and to collaborate with community groups, such as Emory Beacon of Light, that built a beautiful complex from the ground up.
Thank you. And Janice Louis George?
Yeah. Affordable housing, it's becoming harder for families to survive, and we've seen right now during the COVID-19 crisis that May 1st is coming, and families are not sure how they're going to pay their rent or pay their mortgage. For me, it's about producing more housing near transit, more family-oriented housing, two, three bedrooms. It's about producing housing that's affordable for everyone, and that's everyone who also makes less than $50,000 a year. It's important for our teachers to be able to stay here, but rent hikes continue to happen. Today, we made phone calls to not only extend rent control, but to expand it. I'm the only candidate who's signed on to reclaim more control, which would expand our rent control from 19 buildings built for 1975 to 2005, which would add a significant amount of units of rent-controlled apartments that won't be susceptible to the rent increase, height, and rent increases we're seeing. My family experienced rent increases, and we have to make sure that we're helping people from being disadvantaged. And so that's not just doing the status quo of extending rent control, but expanding it to include more families like our teachers and our first responders.
Time's up.
Thank you.
So the next question also is for all three candidates. Are you in favor of decriminalizing social use of marijuana? And can you explain your position? Sorry, and we're starting with Marlena Edwards.
I am in favor of the current rules, which limits the amount of plants that you can own, the size, the height, since we already have it in law in the District of Columbia, the 420 coordinates, yes. And also, if it happens to be with medicinal marijuana use, we do have the Tacoma Wellness Center here in Ward Four, which has marijuana for medicinal purposes. So only based on current laws that we have in place in the District of Columbia.
Okay, thank you. And Janice Louis George?
Yeah. When you talk about decriminalizing marijuana, the first thing that came to my mind is how many Black and Brown families who have been impacted by the war on drugs that used drugs like marijuana to incarcerate and break up families in our communities... in our communities for over decades. And so as we move forward as our city in decriminalizing marijuana, I want to make sure that we atone and make sure we recognize that families have been broken up because of the criminalization of marijuana. And I want to make sure that when we move forward, as we've heard some of our leaders talking about making this a part of our economy, that those who have been criminalized for this have a place in that economy. We've seen cities move towards that, and then the people who benefit from that have not been Black and Brown families who could. And so I want to make sure that we lift up our Black and Brown communities and atone for the war on drugs that occurred and that we move forward in a way that we all are able to succeed in the economy that we create with marijuana.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Todd.
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, there is legislation before the council to tax and regulate the use and sale of marijuana in the District of Columbia. That bill came down to us early last year. We have not held a hearing on the legislation. It's certainly something that I look forward to engaging into conversation around. I look forward to talking to War Four residents across all 20 neighborhoods to get their thoughts and feedback on what the best course of action is. At the council, pre-my tenure on the council, we decriminalized marijuana and tax regulation and sale is something different. And so I look forward to having the conversation. It will do a lot of things for our economy, but I would want to hear from more War Four residents.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this question is for Janice Lewis George. You are reported to have expressed support for BDS, Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement related to boycotting Israel. Could you explain why you are in support of this movement?
For me, when we talk about Israel and, you know, I haven't taken a view on it wholeheartedly, but I did speak with, you know, members of our community who have explained to me the deep history that lies in those communities. And I have continued to learn about the issues that matter. As an African American, I know that histories can be construed to fit a narrative and that what can be seen sometimes as revolution or anything of that nature sometimes gets misconstrued. And so I want to get the history right, because I know that sometimes history gets misconstrued for those communities. And so in my conversations, you know, that is what I have learned and what I have learned and how I have supported that community in defining and understanding their history and being a supporter of that.
Okay. This question is for Councilmember Todd. During your time as council member, what one piece of legislation that you initiated, not that you joined in with others, but that you initiated, are you most proud of?
Well, I will tell you that during my time on the council, I've introduced, passed, funded a number of bills that I authored. But what I'm most proud of is my senior dental services plan. And Samantha, when I was elected to the council in 2015, as I began going across all 20 neighborhoods, I heard from a number of seniors who talked about the fact that dental care was not in their health regime and that they needed help and needed service. So I believe in 2017 or 2018, I introduced legislation that will create a free dental service program for seniors. I introduced it through the council, moved it through the Committee on Health. We are entering our third budget of it being funded at around between $200,000 and $500,000. And we've helped hundreds of seniors, not only in our ward, but across the city, to get much-needed dental services through that plan. And that was something that I heard directly from a number of War Four seniors. Action introduced the bill and got it through the council, so I'm super proud of that.
Okay, thank you.
This next question is for Marlena Edwards. What do you feel is the best approach to ensuring that children across the city have equal access to good schools within the neighborhoods where they live?
I'm sorry, Ms. Nelson, could you please repeat the question?
Certainly. What do you feel is the best approach to ensuring that children across the city have equal access to good schools within the neighborhoods where they live?
I have worked extensively with DC public schools, Office of the State Superintendent's Office, and Child and Family, directly their executive leaders on initiatives that would help to maximize funds. We need to look at ways that we can infuse more money into schools and bring in more proper staffing, special needs, the cadre of staffing that is needed for learning and learning achievement, which can be done through Medicaid. Also, another way to maximize money and to equalize education across the city is to look at and analyze staffing at all schools and...
Thank you.
Can we get in on that question? That's just a great, we get education questions all the time in our ward, and that's a great question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And may I just say to make sure that you have adequate staffing at all schools?
Okay, I'm for going on with the candidates all having a chance to answer that.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, Janice Lewis George.
Yeah. I think it's so important we talk about how we make sure we have strong neighborhood schools for families, that we also talk about how we fund our schools. Equitable funding model that is not just based on enrollment alone, but takes into account the social equity needs of each of our unique neighborhoods and our communities. And I think when we change that funding model to be just beyond enrollment, we will be able to service the schools and the students and the needs they have. It also means looking at where our funding is going and dedicating it to our students with disabilities, making sure our at-risk funding actually makes it to our students that are at risk. It also means changing the way we treat our teachers and making sure we're retaining our teachers and retaining our administrators. And they're able to stay in schools, because when you have a teacher and administrator turn off, we don't have stable communities, and we need stable communities to be able to take... I'm a strong supporter of supporting our neighborhood schools, because they build community. They are part of our community, and if we actively fund them and make sure the funds get there, we will be able to see the equity gaps in our school system close.
Time's up.
Thank you. Councilmember Todd.
Thank you very much for that question. I've spent the last five and a half years working to do just that. I've visited every War Four school, public school, public charter school, independent school, private school, you name it, on an average of three times or more, because I wanted to ensure that I keenly understood what the needs were as it relates to the facilities, let the principals know and be clear that they have a partner, really figure out from teachers and parents what they want to see in their neighborhood school. We are very fortunate in our ward to have a number of amazing neighborhood schools that students all across the city want to attend. And it's because we've been very focused on it these last five years and even before these last five years that I've been on the council, on making sure that we're making key investments in not only our infrastructure, but also our school leadership, our teachers, and course offerings and curriculums. And we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, this question is for all three candidates. Do you think that the sex trade should be decriminalized or legal and/or legalized? And do you think it will increase or decrease sex trafficking? And we're starting this round with Janice Lewis George.
Okay. The question alone, I think, has some issues, because the sex trade is separate from sex work. And I think the conflating of those two terms is where we are as a community and why have we seen so much backlash? When we talk about sex workers and we talk about crimes of poverty that produce these type of issues, we're talking about having stabilizing housing and making sure that an economy that would support our sex workers. And so I'm in making sure that we're not criminalizing crimes of poverty and people who need our support. If we want to talk about ending the school-to-prison pipeline, we don't need to create new offenses to add for people to go continue to go into that prison pipeline. We can solve our public safety problems. We have real problems with violent crimes. And going and doing, continuing to criminalize actions of poverty and crimes of poverty is not the direction we should be going in. We should be supporting and helping people and making sure that they have somewhere to live. And that doesn't include sex trafficking, which is a completely different avenue.
Thank you, and Councilmember Todd.
Thank you. I would not support it at the council. There was a bill, or still there is a bill at the council. There's been a hearing. Should it come up for a vote, I will vote no, and I'll tell you why. Firstly, there have not been many more issues that I've heard uniformly from War Four neighbors across all 20 neighborhoods about their opposition for. So that's one reason. The second reason is I've heard from a number of individuals and organizations who were very concerned about the legislation and its ability to increase sex trafficking and thinks that there should be more discussion around the issue. So again, there have not been many issues that I've heard uniformly from more War Four residents in opposition of legislation at the council. So I would not support it.
Okay, and before I go to Marlena Edwards, I just want to remind all of our listeners that there is no, there will be no Q and A during the forum, that all questions have been previously asked from the community and have been compiled for the forum. So thank you, but no more questions. And now Marlena Edwards. Same question.
Thank you so much. I have a master's of social work, and I have worked extensively through so many agencies in the health and human services cluster with local human service agencies. And I do not believe in decriminalizing sex work, because there are so many socioeconomic issues that tie into it. It's dangerous. And we want to make sure that we are providing services for peoples, which is transitional housing and wraparound services that keep them safe so people can transition to other types of work.
Okay, thank you.
This question is for the challengers. What do you believe is the number-one mistake made by the incumbent that you would correct? And Councilmember Todd will have time for rebuttal. We'll start with Janice Lewis George.
I think the number-one mistake we've seen Councilmember Todd make is he continues to side with special interests instead of the interest of working families in our ward. We've seen it in 2016 when he voted against paid family leave, after many, including myself, told our stories of having to take care of our children, our spouses, and our parents, and deserving to have a living wage while doing so. We've seen him in 2017 take away TOPA rights when we are a city that already has dealt with 20,000 residents already displaced. We've seen it again in 2018 when we voted for Initiative 77. And I, myself personally, as a tip worker, threw out to survive in law school. And then I knew the issues that those communities faced, tip workers and not having a living wage. But no matter where you fell on the issue, we voted for it as a ward, and we voted for it as a city. And as soon as that happened, our council member repealed. He sided with business interests and against working families time and time again, and he never sides with people who need him most, and that's the residents of War Four who are fighting to survive and stay in this city.
Marlena Edwards.
The mistake and bone of contention that I have voiced personally with the incumbent deals with the development of Walter Reed Hospital. As you know, part of my platform is economic development. Economic development should have been, Walter Reed should have been built out much faster than this. There, it's been moving too slow. There should have been more vision. We need to have made it fit with the character of the neighborhood here, and it should have been more based on a model like Reston Town Center or MGM Harvard. Because with economic development, you can provide jobs. So that's a way of dealing with poverty or unemployed or unemployed in the District of Columbia.
Thank you.
You could have provided jobs for people in War Four.
Thank you. And Councilmember Todd, a rebuttal.
Yep, so as it relates to paid family leave, I absolutely support the intent of the legislation. And let me be clear, I support paid family leave in the District of Columbia. It is the law of the land, and I intend to ensure from my point of view at the council that it is implemented as it should be. But the reason I voted against it was because we would be sending over 60% of the benefit to Maryland and Virginia, and I'm a DC-first kind of council member. As it relates to TOPA on residential homeowners, repealing that, you know, I heard from War Four resident after War Four resident, senior after senior, who had rented their basement to someone, and they needed to sell their home to take care of themselves, right? To be able to move to an assisted-living facility. And they were literally being held up by folks invoking TOPA rights. Now, there are some good actors, but there are bad actors too. And we did nothing on TOPA on multifamily units. We only repealed it on single-family residences. And I heard from tons of War Four residents who had been literally raked over the coals by folks being bad actors. And then around Initiative 77, I heard from hundreds of workers, tipped workers, who said that it wasn't good for them, that they wanted the ability to continue to get their tips. In DC law, if you don't make your tips, the employer is required by DC law, current law, to pay you the minimum wage of $15 per hour. So to have our small businesses shoulder that burden, I thought was unfair. To have small businesses like Nick Marcus, who owns Homestead in Pettworth, lives in DC, who owns a business in DC, tell me that he would have to close his business down should Initiative 77 move forward. Now, we've worked too long and hard on Georgia Avenue and across corridors in War Four to bring the type of neighborhood-serving retail that we want, to bring those types of jobs and economic opportunity to shut it down, particularly with those are the very businesses being most hurt by the COVID-19 crises. And so we can figure out how to support folks who need better-paying jobs and good wages, and we're doing it. But we can also figure out how to make sure we're supporting the organizations that can pay those jobs and pay those good wages, provide those jobs and pay those...
Commander, I think the matter is we voted for it as a ward, and we voted for it as a city. And our council doesn't get to just take the votes and the will of the voters away. This is a democracy.
You responded, and we gave the council member an opportunity for rebuttal. Next question.
Okay, this question is for Councilmember Brandon Todd. In your time as council member, have you voted in opposition to the position of the mayor? And if so, what was your reason for disagreeing with her position?
Absolutely. And while I share a lot of priorities with Mayor Bowser, as you know, we worked together for over eight years. We think quite a lot alike on a number of issues. But I'll tell you one that we didn't quite agree on was when the council voted to decriminalize fair evasion, and the mayor wanted to veto that legislation. I didn't support her veto to undo the action that the council had taken. Now, I could give you a number of other instances, but that is one that stands out. I know that... a number of other instances, but that is one that stands out. I know that when a mayor who rarely uses power issues a veto, she feels strongly about something. And I did not support her veto to overturn the will of the council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next question is for all the candidates. After the pandemic is over, should MPD continue with their policy for not arresting for low-level crimes? Yes or no? And please explain your answer. We'll start with Marlena Edwards.
Now, in terms of low-level crime, we need to totally look at revamping the criminal justice system because there are issues with racial bias. There may be issues with putting people in jail and giving them excessive punishment or arresting them for issues that may be nominal in other jurisdictions. So post-COVID-19, yes, we need to revamp our system, look at low-level crimes, and look at a way to provide, you know, more training adults or so, so that they have skills, so that they don't have to participate in crime. They can participate as a member in our community.
Thank you. Janice Lewis George?
Yes, I think as we move forward as a city, I'm a former Assistant Attorney General, having worked in public safety in my entire career. And we need to start using evidence-based solutions that work to solve crime. In cities like Chicago, for instance, the first thing they did to start to focus on deterring crime and interrupting violent crime is to let go of the lower-level offenses and have our resources focused on interrupting crime in neighborhoods. We know that programs like the Cure Violence Interrupters that we started at the Attorney General's Office work, and they come into the system and interrupt crime before it happens. We know that a public health approach where we're putting resources into the neighborhoods, having jobs for individuals, providing after-school programs for our young kids. We know that we need to be less, have less just reactive policing and more proactive policing and community resourcing. And so I think, yes, we move forward in a way. We know that vanity license plates aren't going to get it done, but evidence-based solutions will. And I know that from my experiences as Attorney General, that this is going to take an all-hands-on-back approach to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Brandon Todd?
No, thank you for that question. And there's no silver bullet to public safety in our ward and certainly in the District of Columbia. I'm proud that over the last five years, our numbers are trending in the exact right direction, but we still have a lot of work to do. Over my tenure on the council, I have created an advisory committee that advises me on public safety policy. Last year, I pulled together a government-wide task force on public safety comprised of about 40 offices and agencies, from the Attorney General's Office to the Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, to DOES, to DCRA, to really think about public safety from a government-wide perspective. I have an amazing relationship with our two commanders in the War Four, our Second District Commander, Commander Bedline, and our Fourth District Commander, Randy Griffin, to make sure that we are appropriately putting resources in neighborhoods where that...
Thank you.
Okay, we've come to the part of our evening where we're going to have closing statements. I want to thank everybody for their questions and our candidates for their answers. But now it's time for our closing statements, and I will turn that over to Candace.
Yes, thank you, everybody. We hope that you have gotten good responses to the questions that you've submitted, and thank you for listening. Our closing statements will be two minutes apiece, and we will start with Councilmember Brandon Todd.
Well, first, thank you all for putting this forum on this evening. Thank you to our timekeeper, our questioners, for your diligence tonight. But really, being elected twice so far as council member representing War Four has truly been the most humbling opportunity that I've ever had. Having the opportunity to traverse 20 neighborhoods seven days a week for the last five years, to hear from residents like Joan Thomas, who's lived in her house for 70 years and has raised her family in War Four, has served as a precinct captain, has been an advisory neighborhood commissioner, hear from her about what her hopes and dreams are for her community, hear from young families like the Mandles, who live in Petworth, who moved here five or six years ago, and now they have children and they want to make sure that our communities are fit for them and fit for their families. So that has been an amazing opportunity, and that's why I'm running for reelection, to continue the progress that we started five years ago, to make sure that we're focused on seniors, make sure that we're focused on our young people, being focused on how we grow economic opportunity to continue to increase our tax base. But make sure that while we're doing so, we are reinvesting in those who need the government of the District of Columbia the most. And my record says that I have listened to War Four residents, that I have gone down to the council of the District of Columbia, taken their needs and desires to the forefront of the budgeting process, the policymaking process, and the community-building process. And those are the reasons I'm running for reelection, and I want to ask everyone to vote safe, vote at home for number one on your ballot, Brandon Todd. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Lewis George?
Yes, thank you, Candace. Thank you for everyone for hosting and for having this engaging conversation. I first want to talk about, right now during this COVID crisis, we have seen systems in our city broken, healthcare access. We've been talking about making sure that our healthcare system has, everyone has access, and we see now more than ever we need it. We see our students and the digital divide that has occurred and how they need investments that go beyond just modernization of school buildings. We've seen the importance of paid family leave right now in our current situation. We see individuals like my mother, a postal worker, who's still on the front lines, working every day. Right now, more than ever, we need leadership who's not only going to get us through this, but is going to also make sure that when we come out of this, we come out of this in a way that our working families, this won't be on the back of our working families. The council member said that he supported the tenants of paid family leave, but he absolutely didn't vote for it. And we don't need someone who just supports the tenants, but who's going to come down for the people for it. We don't need someone who says, oh, I'm a people-first, that I didn't support paid family leave because it was going to hurt our economy, which it was not going to do. But we just need paid family leave more now than we ever needed it. You know, what we need during this time to get through this is bold, innovative, solution-oriented, accountable leadership that puts people first. That's what's going to get us through this. The kind of leadership I exhibit as an Assistant Attorney General at the Office of the Attorney General, the type of leadership that I exhibited when I was able to serve in schools, when I was even able to serve our community on the State Committee currently. Right now, more than ever, we can't just maintain the status quo because the status quo isn't going to get that. We need a leader who's going to be at the Wilson Building, and when it's time for the budget, it's going to fight for War Four residents. We need someone who's going to be unbought by developers, unbought by corporations, unbossed by the current administration, who's going to fight for working families. And that is a vote for Janice Lewis George for War Four. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marlena Edwards?
Yes, thank you so much to the hosting organizations and for the community joining in this evening. Again, I'm Marlena Edwards, and I have been a passionate advocate, working across all areas of the city. I've worked in all eight wards. I've worked with numerous organizations, and I am the best qualified candidate to be your next War Four council member. I have been on numerous boards, National Association of Social Workers, United Planning Organization, which is the largest social service organization. I've assisted with affordable housing efforts. I've worked with numerous unions. I've been on the DC Democratic State Committee, and I've worked extensively with local and national initiatives. So I have the best experience in being known as a fighter and advocate. We need to bridge east of the park and west of the park in War Four. We need to bridge the equitable divide with education across all wards. We need to make sure that all voices are heard throughout our city and that individuals are able to participate in democracy throughout this city. And that is why I'm running for War Four City Council, to be a fighter and to continue to be an advocate, to continue to be a voice. I have an excellent working relationship with at least half of the city council members, worked extensively with executive leaders locally, nationally, so that we can move this. And we want to move the city forward, and I'm the one who can help bridge and move the city forward.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, I want to start ending our forum by thanking our timekeeper and our host, Randy Speck, Chair of ANC 34G. I want to thank all three of our candidates for coming tonight, showing up, and having excellent answers to their questions. And my co-moderator, Candace Nelson, and to our viewers, thank you so much, everyone. If you have friends who were not able to log on, they can now see a recording of the forum by uploading ANC 34G website, which is on one of our screens here. It's www.anc3g.org or the ANC 3G YouTube channel, which is ANC 3G. And I wish everyone safe, safe during these strange times that we're living in and just be well. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye. Good night.
Thank you.